Call to order the April 22nd, 2021 Business Meeting of the Board of Clackamas County Commissioners. Gary Schmidt, County Administrator, would you please call the roll?
Yes Chair Smith, first our staff support this evening. Stephen Madcor, County Counsel, Christina Twiliger, Clerk to the Board. Roll call, and actually Commissioner Savis says there's no audio. Christina, he's not hearing it, so on Zoom. Commissioner Savis, can you hear me now? No, so we're not broadcasting audio on Zoom, so we're going to figure that out. Commissioner Savis is on Zoom in the hearing room. Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Commissioner Schull?
Here.
Chair Smith?
Here. Thank you. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us on the Zoom app for this meeting and you are interested in providing testimony or comment, we will prompt you to regard how to do that when the time is right. With that in mind, I would like to remind all participants, including all staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced in this meeting. Additionally, I have some cards filled out here for people who want to participate. We are reaffirming this little brochure, Public Testimony Before the Board of County Commissioners. It was written by a colleague back in 2012, and we are reaffirming it. We have updated it. Every person who comes into this meeting room may pick one up. Additionally, those who are on Zoom will have a link, maybe not today because we're just implementing it today, and in order to testify on Zoom, you will need to click acknowledgement that you have received this and you have it available for reading. And it just goes over the rules of decorum, presenting effective testimony, what's the testimony process, what are my responsibilities, and then what happens with my testimony. And good tips, because a lot of people, you know, don't understand what to do, and this is just a guide to help you through the process, and I have found it to be very helpful. Thank you for that. Gary, would you like to introduce the first item?
Yes Chair Smith, and first Commissioner Savis, can you hear us now?
I can, thank you.
And Commissioner Savis is present, thank you. All right, we'll start with ice storm updates. Nancy Bush, Director of Disaster Management, please go ahead.
All right, thank you and good morning Commissioners and Administrator Schmidt. So I don't have a lot to update on ice storms this morning. We do know that we have the request that has went into FEMA Region 10 and then also at the national level for a federal declaration, so we are waiting to hear back from that. In the meantime, we're working very diligently with our partners, the cities, special districts, you know, the fairgrounds, et cetera, to make sure that they're tracking everything that is related to the ice storm, so when we hopefully get the declaration, they have all of that information available to them so we can get it turned in fairly quickly. We are also hearing too that, you know, FEMA has changed some of the ways that they collect and do declarations, and then before, it was like two, two and a half years before we were reimbursed, we're looking at something that's a much shorter period of time now. So we'll see how that works out with the declarations from the wildland fires as well as the ice storm. So that's what I have on the ice storm. Thank you.
Thank you for that Nancy. Hopefully we will be reimbursed faster than what's been in the past.
Any questions Christina? Nope, all right. Next COVID-19 updates Nancy will present, as well as Philip Mason Joyner, our County Public Health Director. Go ahead, please.
All right, thank you Christina for getting up those slides. So yeah, we have a lot to talk about this week with COVID, so we're going to go through our slides, and Philip's going to talk a little bit more in depth around our risks and what's going on there. So first, here in Clackamas County, we have 15,557 total cases and 204 deaths. That is up 483 cases and two deaths from last week. Multnomah County has 35,310 and 570 deaths. Their cases went up 872 in a week, and they have four additional deaths. Washington County has 23,704 cases with 229 deaths, and they went up 559 cases in a week, but they had no additional deaths. Next slide, please. So you can see here on our graph that we've been, of course, tracking the ups and downs of our cases. We now have 525 for this week, which is up from the 438 from last week. And again, we're still on that upward climb. Next slide. The COVID-positive patients that are in our Northwest Oregon hospitals is still, is rising. We have 138 when this was done yesterday, and we are continuing to see that rise here in the region. And when we talk a little bit more about hospital data, it's probably going to continue to rise with our case rising as well. Hospital capacity on the next slide, thank you. So here we're seeing that the staffed adult ICU beds in the tri-county area is not, at this time, is not changing a great deal. It is still being pretty steady, and of course, we're keeping a very close eye on that too as our cases go up. Our county metrics, we are in high risk at this time, so the data we're going to be talking about today is actually the week in between when the Governor does the two-week movement week, and Philip will cover that in just a moment. But in the last two-week period, we went up to 212.3 for 100,000 population, and our test positivity rate is 6.8. Without the hospital metrics that were added by the Governor a couple of weeks ago, that would be kicking us back into high risk if it were a movement week, which it is not. So Philip's going to cover that a little bit more in just a few minutes. I don't know, Philip, do you have anything else on this slide?
Well, good morning Chair Smith and Commissioners. Yeah, so the state of Oregon last week did change the process for counties that would have to move back.
Excuse me Philip.
Do I need to get closer?
Excuse me Philip. We have a wonderful participation in our room today, and because of that, our system has kicked on and the fan is creating a lot of noise. So if I could get all participants to talk directly into the microphone and maybe raise your voice just a notch, because it's very difficult with masks. It tends to muffle our voice and we can't be heard. So Philip, if you could please, thank you, and Nancy too.
Thank you very much. So if we can get the slideshow back on Christina. Okay, this sounds much better, yes. The state of Oregon did release an update to the process for when counties are moving, if they have to move from high to extreme risk, and it's based on this hospital capacity metric. We did not meet this metric, which is a very good thing, which means that for two additional weeks starting this Friday, we will remain in high risk and not have to move back into the extreme risk level. It is concerning that our case counts continue to increase. We're seeing more community spread and limited vaccine supplies still, so, you know, we're working really hard in public health. Our focus is to get vaccines into arms for everyone who wants the vaccine. Currently, for all folks who are 16 years old and older are now eligible. However, the story continues. We do not have enough vaccine supplies for everyone who wants it. My hope is that in the weeks in the next couple of months to come, that will change. Hospitals, as Nancy showed, we are seeing an increase in those hospitalizations. So we are concerned that two weeks from now, we might be in a situation where if this pattern continues, we could, as a community, be moved into that extreme risk level. Next slide, please. I shared this slide a couple of weeks ago, just in terms of our outbreaks. This fluctuates in terms of the settings and the number of outbreaks every week, but you can see just over the past, since the beginning of March, that our, the number of outbreaks we have in all settings has increased. Schools, as we've talked about quite a bit, workplaces of all types. We've even, you know, we've seen where long-term care facilities and retirement facilities had gotten really small in the single digits, and that was great. This week we are at 11, so that's a little bit concerning. You know, the vaccine is not required, so we do have some staff, we do have some residents in these communities that have chosen not to get the vaccine. We continue to meet with facilities and try to encourage that, to prevent this from happening. Next slide, please. The work really continues, all hands on deck. We have vaccinated 157, over 157,000 people in Clackamas County as of yesterday, which represents a little over 37% of our total population. Locally, we're working really hard. This weekend, we'll be at the Town Center starting tomorrow for the next four days over the weekend and into Monday. 2,000 doses will be provided each day. Really, a lot of things goes to our partners, some of the local pharmacies, and our fire agencies that are helping us put on that event all weekend. Next slide. And you may have seen the news, the regions, some of the Latinx leaders in the community, they had a press conference expressing their concerns about some of the barriers and the challenges to get the Hispanic members of our community access to the vaccine. So this is new data I wanted to share. This just shows different populations broken down by race and ethnicity, the percentage of the population in the county that they make up, the number of people which, within each of these groups who have been vaccinated. And in the far-right column, that, our starting place and the way we've been thinking about this in public health has been, one of the first goals is to get each of these populations to that 70% threshold, 70% being in general what's needed to achieve herd immunity. So if you think about that for each of these populations, the number on the right is the number of people we still have to vaccinate to meet that metric. I think this is a good start. We have a lot of work to do. Our local work is focused on trying to provide some more culturally specific, smaller appointments along with the bigger sites that we have, because we recognize that folks want to go to a site where they're more comfortable, where there's people who speak their language, who look like them, and who they can have trust in with the nonprofits that are helping us do this work. Next slide. Vaccine schedules, so the majority of the doses are at the options at the Oregon Covidion Center, and the drive-through at the airport. I want to encourage everyone to go to getvaccinated.org.gov where you can pre-register, and now our local events are now added to that. So if you register that, you can, you'll also get notified if there is an appointment available in Canby, in Sandy, in Malala, or in North Clackamas. So you will get the opportunity to get alerted when an appointment becomes available, and that's really helpful, so you don't have to continue to always check the webpages. There's many of this. This is not a centralized system or process to get appointments, but that should help. And if folks have technology concerns, or they want to be, need some additional support, they're welcome to call our phone number, our call center at 503-655-8224. There's a waitlist. We also have seen some no-shows, so we have a standby list, and we will plug you into an appointment as quickly as one becomes available for you. And in closing, the last slide for today. Oh, sorry Christina. The key, you know, the hard part is we aren't able to vaccinate as quickly as we can to really slow down this increase, so we need the community's help. As individuals, as we continue to reopen and loosen the restrictions, just in terms of our own personal behaviors, we really want to encourage people to stay home if they're sick, or if they've been exposed. Continue following the precautions that we've been saying for over a year, wearing the mask, keeping your distance. The weather's getting better, so take your gatherings outside if you can. Participate in contact tracing. We're seeing about 40% in the last week, we haven't been able to reach folks, 40% of the cases. They either have an answer to our phone calls, or they've refused. So that goes a long way to helping us and helping the community. And of course, get vaccinated once it becomes available. For employers, flexibility. We are trying to provide more weekend options, more evening options for folks, because now frontline workers are eligible. Getting an appointment during the day is tough, but there's also a new federal program to provide a tax credit for employers where you can provide paid time off to get the vaccine. So we want to encourage and promote that as well. That's all I have prepared today. Happy to take any questions the board may have.
Any questions for Mr. Joyner? Yeah, there's a light on. Commissioner Schull?
Yes. On these new cases, are most of them just affected, infected with COVID, or how many of them are actually sick?
You mean symptomatic?
Yes, yes, thank you.
How many are symptomatic? Yeah, I don't have the exact numbers on that. I can gladly talk to the team and get some data on that and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
I know, I will say in general, it tends to be younger individuals, 20, 30, 40-year-olds that are driving the increase. And then for folks who become severely ill and need to go to the hospitalized, it's a range. Older adults who haven't been vaccinated, younger people as well.
Any other questions? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you Chair Smith. Few questions. I saw something on the CDC guidelines, so I want to make sure this is correct, because it's a little bit in conflict with what you had said, just want to clarify. If someone has been vaccinated, but they've been exposed to the virus, someone they know comes down with COVID, do they need to self-isolate, or are they okay to not self-isolate?
Thank you for the clarification, yeah. If you've been vaccinated and two weeks after your second shot, two weeks after your second shot, you are exempt from quarantine.
Okay, I wanted to make sure that that was true. So I'm wondering, Christina, if we can go back to the disparity slide real quick? And I was trying to, I was doing some quick math on my phone. I was pulling up Paul Savis here as I'm hearing the presentation, he's always doing the math. But I was just interested that some populations that are identifying seem to be doing really well with the percentage of vaccination, so to get to herd immunity, the American Indian, I mean, it looks like we're doing better there, but the real disparity in our, in Clackamas County seems to be the people who are Hispanic. And I had the opportunity to go and be at a site where farmworkers were getting vaccinated, and I was very impressed with the culturally specific information that was there, the coordination with the community-based organization, how that went, and the incredible amount of outreach that was done to our agricultural businesses to get their farmworkers in. So it seems like we're doing, for at least that portion of the population, we're doing pretty well. I would like to get your thoughts on that. And then the next question I have is what specific strategies are we employing to do better outreach to that, because that seems to me the community that has the most disparity, but I might be wrong, so just a little bit more on that.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that perspective, and glad you were able to go see a vaccination event at a local farm. Yeah, we have over 6,000 migrant and seasonal farmworkers who predominantly are Latinx. I know Clackamas County Public Health alone has vaccinated over 600 of those individuals in the last couple of weeks. We've been convening and meeting with Latinx community-based partner organizations, community groups. There is a lot of hesitancy within this community, however, it's hard to generalize. You know, I think folks, the partner organizations we work with who are able to do outreach and connect with folks who already have connections, that's going quite well. It's the portion of the population who lives in Clackamas County, but maybe they're not associated with a group. They're just having to live here, but they're harder to reach because they're working, they're living, and that's what we're all trying to work on, is how to reach those folks who want to learn more about the safety of vaccines, who have questions, who might be hesitant. That is, that work that's happening, and my hope is that this data will improve in the weeks to come.
I mean, it seems like such a hard challenge, because it is, people are dispersed throughout the economy, and I would really like to understand how we're going to do better, because until we get to a high, to the herd immunity, we're just going to keep going around in circles with this.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's exactly right.
Are you finished? Are you finished?
One last question. I am a little confused. I thought I had it down, but I would just like you to explain, because I think it's important if we move to extreme risk because of our hospital capacity, what actually has happened? So could you explain that again for where in Clackamas County we will be moving to extreme risk, under what metric? And I don't know if we need the slide up, if that would help. But maybe not, maybe you can just explain.
There's essentially four metrics now to determine if we will move into extreme risk. It's the case count per 100,000 population, which we are over that, which would put us into extreme. The test positivity, which we want below five, which we're at 6.8 right now, so we're over that. Where we're not over is the hospitalizations. That's a statewide metric. 200 hospitalized COVID patients in hospitals, when they pull that data, we did not meet, the state did not meet that threshold. But two weeks from now, it is a strong possibility that could happen.
Okay, so it's statewide 200, and where are we at right now?
No, it's statewide 300.
300.
Oh, statewide 300, and where are we now?
272.
Oh, no.
We're close.
Okay, so that's not good. And this will be in a week, that this is going to happen?
Two weeks.
And well, that'll mean indoor dining?
That will mean no indoor dining, takeout and outdoor dining only. Indoor entertainment would have to, would not be able to do that. We would not be able to do indoor entertainment.
Okay, do we have any idea of, there was a lot of confusion, we went from moderate to high risk, we thought we would get a warning period, that did not happen. Three days later, businesses were needing to shift. Will we get any warning period moving to extreme risk, or do, should we start public outreach and communication now?
Yeah, we are starting that actually immediately after this meeting.
Oh.
And yeah, just to be clear too, so we'll get the data in on Monday for the two weeks, and if we go into extreme risk, that's on the 30th, right Philip? April 30th, which is Friday.
Okay, so we will know on Monday, and we will be able, because the three days was really tough for our businesses. This is really bad news, you guys. I don't want to see you anymore.
Yeah, it is bad news.
That's funny. Okay, have you finished Commissioner Fisher? I appreciate your sentiment, it's shared by many people. I have two quick questions for Philip. Is there a cost to the vaccination?
There is no cost to individuals. Some of the, there's no cost to, there's no cost to individuals. Some of the confusion is that some of the vaccine providers do ask for your insurance card, because they're able to bill insurance and get some funding to help support this work. However, it's no cost to the individual.
So if they go to one of our clinics in Sandy, Malala, Canby, there's no cost. Maybe we should say that. Maybe people just assume they can't afford it. Additionally, are vaccinations mandatory?
They're not.
So there is a choice, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that may be an issue, why some populations and some people, vaccination rates are what they are, because they have made the choice. And I think we should be mindful of that in our quest to move forward in trying to get the population vaccinated. There will be some people who, for many, many reasons, many health reasons, do, will not be vaccinated. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, thank you Chair, good point. I have been asked the question too, you know, are the vaccinations, is there a cost? And you know, my response has been, no, there's not a cost. But my, I raised my hand for the purpose of asking staff that prior to today, have we increased our messaging to the age groups in which this recent outbreak, if you want to call it that, or rise in cases? Have we increased that level of communication and to the media in which that age group uses social media mechanisms and so forth?
Do you want to do that? Yes Commissioner, we have done that. We, we had like a survey and some things that went out, you know, where they got a prize and that kind of stuff, and it was targeted toward that age group, and we continue to do that. The messages that we do send out are on all platforms that you're just discussing to make sure that we're reaching all age groups. And we are working with PGA too, to see if there's another way we could target the age group. But we have targeted that age group in the past and continue to do so.
Yeah, thank you. In our message or communications with the Governor, that has been one of the key points all along, was, is just increasing the messaging. And looking at the statewide statistics yesterday, the rise across the state is just, it's just increasing. It was not just the metro region or Clackamas County, and the concern that we're hearing today about obviously perhaps transitioning into extreme risk could be just another devastating blow to everyone. Do we have any idea what the adjustments the Governor's office will make with regards to schools and school activities if we go to extreme risk?
My understanding is that schools will not be able to, if for an extremist, they won't be able to expand what they are currently doing, but they don't have to decrease their activities.
It's just hard, just from the mathematical part of how I think, when I look at these kinds of cases or these situations, is that it's hard not to draw correlation to the mandatory school opening in March to the rise. It's hard to dispute that, so it just seems to me that there ought to be some kind of consideration of an adjustment. I know no one wants to hear that, but, and I, we're certainly not in any power or control or position to influence that one way or another evidently. But it just seems that, you know, when we talk about hospital capacity, I think that's got to be a major concern for all of us, that if we reach that, we maximize that hospital capacity, that's putting our community, all our communities across the state at risk, and that ought to be a very, very high priority for everyone. So I am hoping that we do a message out to the businesses and everyone right now that we are likely, or trending right now into extreme risk, and that to, you know, prepare. We need to get that message out.
Thank you Commissioner Savis. Any other comments or questions for these two? Martha Schrader?
I have one more question.
I just want to say that I think this is devastating news. It's worried, I think.
Speak up please Martha.
I think the other piece of this is remember that we are getting federal dollars, we are getting Recovery Act dollars, and I for one want to make sure that we can do everything we can to make sure our businesses remain whole as they go through this crisis, because it really is devastating Main Street, as I have said many times before. And I know Gary, that's in process, that our staff is now working on where those dollars might go, and they will present it to us. When will that happen?
Nancy, can you give that update, please?
Yes, so I think you all received the information, the survey that we're proposing to send out, so we're going to be doing some outreach to the public, which we talked about earlier, and we're talking right now, which I need to talk to Administrator Schmidt on, is like how we want to propose this to you and what we're thinking that we want to do with the dollars. We still don't have the dollars. I want to remind everyone of that. We should have at least half of the dollars by May 11th, but we still don't have any firm guidance, and we still don't have any Q and A on that. But we're working on what our recommendation is going to be to you, and then we will hopefully be able to fit that into the guidance whenever we do receive it.
It occurs to me, since we're waiting for these dollars, has, I know there's been an internal committee set up here at the county, has there been any thought to priorities of where that dollars would Has there been any thought to priorities of where that dollars would go first? And maybe that could help commissioners make a decision. So we're not trying to put in priority who we think are more, are more, I don't want to use the word needy, but maybe that's the word.
Yeah.
Is that, is there, is there a triage process in place?
There is a triage process in place, or that we're, we're making sure we get in place.
Okay, and you'll present that to, that to us at the appropriate time?
Yeah, it's like, what if we get the 40 million now? And then in a year, we get the other 40 million, what does that mean for us and how do we spend it?
Yeah, but I'm talking about our own internal processes.
Oh, yes. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. Has.
Chair Smith, you asked my question.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, very much. Gary, what's next?
Great, thank you, Phillip and Nancy. Next, we have a presentation. South County Drive to Zero Project winners of the Drive to Zero Art Contest. Rob Sadowski from Transportation and Development will present. And Joe Merrick from Transportation and Development.
Gentlemen, just take a seat. Doesn't matter where. Thank you very much. Rob, go ahead, or?
Let me have Joe go ahead.
Joe. Just a moment, please. I believe we have a sound problem. You might have to start over, Joe.
Oh, there we go.
Yes, speak right into the microphone. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Smith, Commissioners. My name is Joseph Merrick. I'm the Traffic Safety Program Manager with Clackamas County, and thank you for having us here today to talk about our South County Drive to Zero campaign and our posters, award winners. And our South County Drive to Zero campaign is rooted in our Traffic Safety Action Plan, which includes a goal of eliminating fatal and serious injury crashes by 2035. The South County project is funded through a grant from the National Safety Council. And I will be talking about a couple of elements of this project, which are unique in that they include low-cost infrastructure improvements along with behavioral change elements. And, oh, do we have our slides up?
Yes, is there a slideshow, Christina? She will start that.
Okay, next slide, please. Oh, I have to put my glasses on.
Switching it over real quick. There we go.
There we go. Next slide. All right. So when we look at our rural area, so this project area covers the areas of Malala and Cambie and that rural area in between. And so covers a pretty vast rural roadway network. And so as we look at rural versus urban, what we see is while 80% of our population lives in urban areas and 20% in the rural areas, the majority of our fatal crashes are in the rural areas. And there's a reason for that, which I will talk about. First of all, though, you know, as we look at the contributing factors across the board for crashes, we see a pretty consistent pattern as we've looked at our data over the past 15 years. And that is, you know, about 36% of our crashes involve inexperienced drivers, about 34% roadway departure crashes where people leave their intended lane of travel, about 31% aggressive driving, those crashes involving speeding, following too close, other types of aggressive driver behaviors. Motorcycle fatalities are very overrepresented in the county at 22%. And then we have drugs and alcohol, our older drivers or senior drivers, and then bicycles and pedestrians as kind of these key contributing factors into our categories of, of crashes. Next slide, please. Now, if we look at the rural area, you've all driven around in the rural area, and you know, it's not like Kansas. It's not all like flat on a nice grid. We have a lot of very curvy roads with a lot of ups and downs. Some of our roads are so narrow, we actually can't fit an edge line on it because there wouldn't be enough room for the vehicle to be, to be on the road. And obviously, we have dark winters and a lot of tree canopy, at least for what's not burned, that keeps those roads that can be a little bit hard to drive on. And then our system has evolved from trails to, to mud roads, to gravel roads, to paved roads. And so oftentimes, the roads aren't connected real well. They kind of come in at funny angles and other things that also make that driving environment a little bit hard. And all of which makes a real challenge for us to maintain those roadways. Next slide. So as we look at things like horizontal curves, we have roads where it's a little bit hard to see as we're going around curves or, you know, steep drops in the roads where, where you may lose visibility. Next slide. And some examples of our lack of edge line or, you know, very narrow road with an edge line. So all these make the driving environment challenging. Next slide. So as I mentioned, this is a two-part project from this National Safety Council grant, so includes this low-cost infrastructure treatment. And then the second part is this highly targeted campaign focused on a single behavior for a single population in the southern part of the county. Going back to the low-cost safety improvements, if we move to the next slide. You know, we have a suite of low-cost countermeasures that we can deploy. We can do things like edge line rumble strips, high-friction service treatment, delineators, curve warning signs, six-inch edge lines, which actually help driver visibility and are also helpful for vehicles and their machine learning as we move towards more autonomous vehicles entering the fleet. Stop signs, flashers. And the next slide. Just a couple of examples of those, curve warning signs, center line rumble strips, recessed pavement markings, recessed reflectorized buttons. And next slide. So the area that we're looking at between Cambie and Malala, this map shows the major roadways on this area. And so as part of the National Safety Council grant, we're doing some recessed reflectorized buttons. So those are the little buttons you can see when you're driving at night. And we recess them so that when we have to plow snow, we don't plow all the buttons off with the, with the snow. And then we also have a all-roads transportation system project that we're just starting construction on. And that is through, funding through Oregon DOT using federal funds. And that's actually looking at a number of the roads in this area, adding, updating curve warning signs, updating intersection ahead warning signs. And so, again, these low-cost countermeasures. And typically, these countermeasures, you'll see a 15%, 20% reduction in fatal and serious injury crashes, like as you add curve warning signs. And so all these have very good demonstrated success. Then we also have a project on Cambie-Markham Highway at Lone Elder, which is being funded through our Community Road Fund to add a turn lane on Cambie-Markham and do some capacity and safety improvements at that intersection. So some good, basic infrastructure improvements to help with the safety of the project. And then Rob's going to cover the second part of the project, which I think is probably some of the more fascinating part of the project. So I'll turn it over to Rob.
Thank you, Joe.
Please introduce yourself.
And is this on?
Yep.
Good morning. My name is Rob Sadowski. I'm the Traffic Safety Outreach Coordinator for the Department of Transportation and Development. What I like to say to people that don't know what that title means is I try to get people to stop doing stupid things while they're driving their vehicle. A lot of my work is focused on teenagers because the earlier we reach people, the better chance we have of behavioral change. I'm excited to share with you two different campaign efforts that we're, we're here to talk about. The first is a micro-targeted campaign that seeks to reduce distracted driving by teens in Malala and Cambie and communities in between. This is the first time we, as a county, have worked to build a campaign that is highly targeted, and we're learning from our consultant C+C how to do such efforts so that we can do some of this work on our own without their help in the future. So it's a training component, so that our Public Governance Affairs team, our Health Housing and Human Services team, our Public Health team have all been part of this training and design so that we can learn from these experiences. After much discussion and then some focus group interviewing with teens from these areas, we decided to develop a campaign to get teens to activate their do-not-disturb function on their iPhones. Why iPhones? We learned that through our research that more than 80% of teens in our area have iPhones and not Android systems. And the steps to activate them are very different on each phone. So to be able to communicate real clearly, we're focusing just on iPhone users, but hope that that behavior will, 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 will go to others as well. We also learned that there are two very important barriers to changing behavior with teen. The first is FOMO, or fear of missing out, and the it-won't-happen-to-me mentality. Or what I say, I can drive while listening to music and texting on my phone even when I don't think my parents can do that well, fear. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
So those two barriers that we have to work with. And so understanding that from our teens helps us to design a campaign. We also learned that teens are more likely to be motivated by the experience of real people and their peers more than their parents, teachers, or screen idols. So our campaign is going to actually focus on this FOMO, this fear of missing out. We're going to name him similar to the, you may see the Allstate commercials that focus mayhem. It's going to be similar to that in terms of, we're going to call FOMO out. We're going to be using posters, TikTok videos with creative content providers, things like Instagram. Typical tools that the county doesn't have access to or doesn't use, and our consultant will be able to teach us how to use these and, and help us develop the skill set to do that. And then engagement tools at schools, fairs, festivals, give-away awards. People show me, right, if I go to a classroom and people show me that they've set their do-not-disturb function right then and there, they get a prize. Things like that to immediately reward the good behavior. The next thing I'm going to talk about, the final piece of our presentation, is our Drive to Zero Art Contest. This was a complicated year to work with high school students, as you probably can imagine. Normally, I would go into classrooms and invite students to submit art, but this year I relied on emails, social media, personal contacts to encourage participation. All in all, we got 21 amazing submissions, and it was difficult to reach a decision. But we selected three finalists and two honorable mention. Each entrant, entrant needed to follow some basic rules by staying positive, providing clear action for, for teens to take that activity. And here are our top three artists. And you can see these much more clearer if you go to our website, drivetzero.org. Our top three artists, our first praise winner, who I don't believe is present, is Kenzie Prock from Malala High School. She created this beautiful comic book-style panel that says, "Stay attentive, arrive alive." Our second-place artist, who's here, Carly Shanklin, maybe Carly could stand up, shows us our beautiful mount hood and asks us to slow our roll. This program is, and then you see our third place from Turza Vent, there are better pillows than your airbag. These programs are only, are made possible with a grant from State Farm Insurance. We want to thank you, State Farm, and there's two representatives in State Farm, if you can stand up real quick. Thank you. They provide funding for this program, and they're also working to take these messages and bring it into their own offices when they have offices open and flowing again, and helping communicate through their social media portfolio. So thank you, Matt and Chad, for coming today. The artwork will be featured on our social media on Driving throughout the year, and we're working to place the winning design, "Stay attentive, arrive alive," on signal cabinets throughout the county. Those are the cabinets that turn on our red lights, and, and we own them, and they're all over, and we can access them. Thanks also to the student schools, particularly their health and art teachers that helped us spread the word about this great contest. And finally, go Malala, Wilsonville, and Lake Oswego High Schools. Thank you once again. Thank you, Joe. Christian and myself are available for questions, as is Carly, if anyone has any additional information that they would like. Thank you very much.
Well, I'd like to thank Rob and Joe for coming forward and making us aware of this, and also State Farm for your generous donations and helping us pay for this. It's, it's very heartening when you hear of, of a young person who has veered off the road and is no longer with us. And I certainly have experienced that, and maybe you have too. And I so agree with the focus is on behavior. While, you know, I appreciate all the efforts of our road crew to have the lines painted, to have all this kind of stuff and all this money that's been, we must remain vigilant and alert when we sit behind the wheel of our car. And it's just not our young people. It's me, and it's you as well, because we're all very busy professionals. But I have a question. You know, with these new cars and the advent of all this technology, we have these screens in our car, and you can plug your phone in to your GPS, and boy, you get a call, you get a text message right there on that new technology. How does that play into distracted driving?
Well, there's a lot of evidence that it does come into play. It's hard to collect that data, so it's hard for me to come back and say, X percentage of our crashes are related to using a screen in your vehicle. I could tell you what we do, and sort of what I do is I, I take over Health 1 and Health 2 classes for our high schools for one day each year, each semester, so I can reach, my goal is to reach every high schooler at least twice before they graduate, once in Health 1 and Health 2. And in that presentation, we talk about the risks and dangers of distracted driving. We also talk about multitasking and how difficult it is to multitask. I have a little, it'd be kind of fun to bring it here one day. I have a little roadmap with a little car that you drive along the road. And then while the teen is doing that, I have them texting with another teen. And it's really clear, I mean, they go off the road right away. It's really clear how difficult it is to multitask. And I think those are the kind of activities that reinforce, whether it's the messages that our parents are sharing with their teens. The other thing that's really important is that parents need to demonstrate good behavior. Because even though teens say they will not listen to their parents, early on, they see that behavior and they copy that behavior when they get older.
Sure. I've resorted to listening to music in my car, and that, I find that calms the beast. Right? Right? It's quite effective. Try it. Yes, I see we have some comments. Christina?
Yes, Commissioner Savas.
Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, I just want to just thank our staff for their presentation today. Public safety or traffic safety is a big issue, and I think we all need to be cognizant of that. Especially personal for me, because I lost some family members due to car accidents. But it's also very tragic when you see or nearby when, when youth have a fatal accident. Because often, there's three or four youth in a car and, and a fatality, or even if they do survive, it's, it's a trauma they'll never forget. It's a trauma that impacts their lives. But I, I think, you know, the, one of the best lessons, I think, is remembering some or recalling or bringing to light some of the past accidents of youth in all the schools and using that as examples to, to bring home the point that they're not invincible. And it has happened, even though it may not have been in their class, it may not have been at that particular year or time. But there are so many recent examples, unfortunately, of, of deaths on the road. The other thing I wanted to speak to a little bit is, is that, you know, we don't have the money, but, you know, every dollar counts, regardless of the resource or where it comes from. And that is that we have a lot of roads, even in the urban area, even within the urban growth boundary, that have very little shoulder fog line where there's just nothing, and it's literally less than six inches in places. And you see these roadside memorials, and it's, it's, it's very touching to see how some of the family members still keep some of these roadside memorials. You know, they, they freshen them up, and they're, they're out there frequently, and that's, that's really touching. I mean, think about that for a minute. If you look at parts of Clackamas County where these roadside memorials are, it's pretty significant that people still go out there. And it's also fascinating to see how narrow the road is where these roadside memorials are. So you can draw conclusions there that some of our roads aren't safe, and we need every dollar we can to enhance, enhance our roads. Some of those are ours, some of those are state highways. But nonetheless, traffic safety is incredibly important. And I just, again, want to thank our staff for, and, and the investment we have made in, in Clackamas County on our Road Safety Program. We are nationally recognized for our work. And at NACO, and sometimes our, our name comes up as one of the shining examples of a impressive road safety, traffic safety, Drive to Zero program. So congratulations.
Thank you. Rob, do we have one of the award winners in the audience today?
Yeah, Carly is here.
Would you please stand and come up and introduce yourself? Maybe you can sit where Ed is. I'm going to kick you out, Ed. I just want to acknowledge this wonderful student who has, would you please state your name? You need to really yell on that microphone.
Okay, can you guys hear me now? Better. My name is Carly Shanklin, and I'm from Wilsonville High School.
Well, thank you. What gave you the desire to make a poster?
So, do you guys want to pull my name?
Go ahead, just speak.
Oh, okay. I really wanted to create like a piece of art to kind of, I don't know, I guess just show like the dangers of speeding. As a teenager, you know, driving with other teenagers, a lot of times people just kind of blow off the speed signs or just take them as, you know, just suggestions. And so it's, it's really, it kind of hits home just watching other teenagers, you know, put. just watching other teenagers, you know, put their lives and others' lives at risk while, you know, driving fast. And so, it was kind of an issue that I really got to see firsthand, and I really wanted to kind of create an awareness around that speeding.
Are you an artist by chance?
I am, yeah.
Okay, good. I tell you, living art, I love this. And I want to thank you for doing this and participating. And please continue in your wonderful social advocacy for our people. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and leave that microphone on, because, so it won't be an issue. Well, thank you, staff, Rob and Ed, and everybody in the room who has participated in this. State Farm, my hat's off to you. Thank you very much. And great presentation today. Gary, what's next?
Next chair Smith is the Consent Agenda. Christina, would you please read the Consent Agenda by title only?
Yes. For Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of an agreement with ODOT, Rail, and Public Transit Division for FTA 5311 Rural Transit Funds for COVID-related operations of Mount Hood Express. The maximum to be funded would be $205,000. No match is required. Funding is through Federal Transit Administration 5311 Rural Transportation Funds. No general funds are involved. Number two, approval of a professional services agreement with Oregon EMS Specialists LLC to provide services as Associate Emergency Medical Services. Medical directors, contract maximum for Oregon EMS specialists is $262,185. No general funds are involved. Number three, approval of a professional services agreement with Northwest Permanente to provide services as Associate Emergency Medical Services. Medical directors, contract maximum for Northwest Permanente is $264,097. No general funds are involved. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of a First Amendment to an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Beaverton for provisions of permit processing and building inspection, plan review, services. Negotiated rate for service is $44.82 an hour, or $49.73 overtime hour. Funding from Building Code Division, fees for service revenues. There are no general funds. Number two, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with City of Happy Valley for the Pleasant Valley Villages Phases II through 13 planned unit development. There is no financial impact associated with this agreement. Number three is approval of a resolution declaring the public necessity and purpose for acquisition of rights of way easements and fee property for the Boardman Creek Headwall Repair Project and authorizing good faith negotiations and condemnation actions. Right-of-way acquisition costs are estimated not to exceed $16,000. No general funds are involved. Number four, approval of our intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Canby to transfer permitting authority and maintenance responsibilities for portions of North Locust Street, North Maple Street, and South Redwood Street to the city. Transfer costs are based on the actual cost of a two-inch asphalt overlay, pre-overlay preparation, or preparation, excuse me, and ADA improvements totaling $348,523. No general funds are involved. Number five is approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Canby to transfer permitting authorities and maintenance responsibilities for portions of the North Maple Street, North Redwood Street to the city. Transfer costs are based on the actual cost of a two-inch asphalt overlay and ADA improvements totaling $433,342, and no general funds are involved. Number six is a board order adopting the vacation of a portion of Deer Park Road in the Welch's area. No funds are involved. Number seven is approval to partner with Malala River Watch in applying for an Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board Grant for the replacement of a Woodcock Creek Bridge. Total construction project cost $660,000. Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board Grant, $300,000 road match fund, and $330,000 was for the road match fund, including in the request for the BCC letter of support. Under the Finance Department, approval of Amendment Number Two with Moss Adams for annual financial audit services. Amendment Number Two will add one year of audit services for $326,200 for a total contract not to exceed $1,777,700, funded by the cost allocation and general funds through the Finance Department. Number two is approval of Amendment Number One with Oregon Emergency Management FEMA State Agreement for the Coronavirus Disease. This is an ongoing, and the fiscal impact is unknown at this time. Funding is through FEMA and not general funds. Under County Council, enter into a license agreement with Jason and Kristy Boyd to access and board up two horses at property donated to the county by John and Merrily Wetton. Under elected officials, approval to apply for a sub percipient grant with Clackamas Women's Services for Victims of Human Trafficking Grant. The $154,994 in funds requested will fund a half-full-time employee with funding coming through the office for the victims of crime. That's with the District Attorney's Office. That's your consent agenda.
Thank you very much, Christina. Does any commissioner wish to remove any items? May I have a motion?
I move for approval of the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Scholl to approve the Consent Agenda and seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussion? Christina, seen none, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion has passed at 5-0, has passed 5-0, excuse me. Up next is Public Communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of the board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at the business meeting due to time constraints. And reminder, again, a little pamphlet for your public testimony is very helpful. Please acknowledge that you have seen it, and just pick it up. I will now open the meeting for public testimony, and I will take the people who are in attendance first. And I have some cards here. Up first, Elvis Clark, please come forward, state your name, your residence, and you will have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Elvis Clark. I live in Milwaukee, Oregon. And I've come before the day to ask for the Metro income tax, but I was going to be doing...
Oh, just a minute, Elvis. Your microphone has been turned off. I'm going to ask all presenters, please do not fiddle with the button. You're going to have to start over, Elvis, and we will restart your time. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Okay, I'm Elvis Clark. I live in Milwaukee, Oregon. I'm here to talk about next year's, the Metro income tax comes due for homeless services. And I'm hoping that you might join me in asking Metro Regional Government to create a tab on their website. You might call it a Tax Center website, or tab. And this would be for the Metro income tax. And the tab, or this interface, would contain, like, the tax form, Metro's tax form, and a calculator, or tax calculator, for the amount you might owe. Most people won't owe anything in Clackamas. And also, a postal address, so you could provide a copy or a return that you could send directly to Metro. It is important for personal income tax filers to convey this request, or something similar to it, as an interface between us in Clackamas and Metro. As it looks like, from corresponding with Metro CPA, they delegated most of the authority, all of the authority, in wholesale fashion to the City of Portland. And so, that's a potential rubbing of people the wrong way in Clackamas. It's like we're being subjugated to the City of Portland. And I guess there's some feelings there. I think that'll generate some bad feelings among Clackamas residents that don't live in the City of Portland to ask, "Why am I being asked by the City of Portland to submit my personal income tax returns?" So we need some kind of interface between us and Metro that puts it more in the camp of the Metro Regional Government than Portland. This way, we, I know most governments have some processing with other governments, but usually, they have some kind of interface themselves, so that you know that you're dealing directly with your own government, and not just wholesale delegating it out. And that's my fear anyways, that that's how it's going to work out. I have no financial interest in this request, because it's just as a personal income tax filer. So that's my testimony, and I had submitted written testimony before. So if you could join me in requesting some kind of direct interface between Clackamas residents and Metro, this would be, or ensure it happens, it would be very beneficial in our feelings about not being subjugated to the City of Portland.
Okay. Just a minute. Commissioner Fisher, do you have a comment?
Yeah, just real quickly. So Elvis, I so appreciate you coming and bringing these issues to light, and you know that I've mentioned that. I had a conversation with Metro Counselor, some of your other concerns, and understand that there's pretty tremendous cost savings by partnering with the City of Portland to do that. But this idea, I mean, I really like it.
I don't think it would cost too much.
I am going to follow up with this, because in my mind, if people, like, I go on and pay my property taxes online through Clackamas County.
Yeah.
Super easy to do that. The easier we can make it for the taxpayer, the better. And I also appreciate you saying that most people in Clackamas County will not be paying this tax. So that's a good clarification. So thank you.
A lot of people will be submitting electronically. I still do mine by hand and paper, so, but they might not know they're doing it that way. But at least, we'd have some kind of, this is a Metro tax, it isn't a City of Portland tax.
Right.
And I don't think it would cost too much to just do this on the website there and be like...
So we'll be in touch. But I'm in these conversations all the time, and I will be back with you on that. So I want to just let you know that.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher.
Yep.
Thank you for, Commissioner Fisher, for taking on that job. Yeah. Thank you, Elvis Clark, for coming forward and reminding us of that.
And all commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Next up is Bill Ware. State your name, your residence, and you will have three minutes.
Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners, Bill Ware-Damascus. This morning, I have additional information to add to my testimony last week.
Can you speak, Mr. Ware? Would you pull the microphone closer and just really enunciate your voice? Thank you.
Okay. On January 11, 2021, Commissioner Scholl issued a statement to his colleagues and county staff apologizing for his social media posts made prior to being elected to public office. The same day, at 6:32 PM, Commissioner Fisher sent an email on her county-issued email address to her professional political strategist, requesting advice on how to answer Mr. Scholl's apology. A few suggestions she had is, quote, "I had no indication of your racial bigotry, and I am literally in shock." One minute later, at 6:33 PM, Commissioner Fisher resent the email with the warning, quote, "So sorry, please don't respond to this email for the official county email," unquote. She used her iPhone. On January 12, the next day, at 10:49 AM, Commissioner Fisher, although still grappling with shock, she managed to respond to Commissioner Scholl's statements. With a scolding tone, it starts, quote, "I don't know how you will weather the storm. People are calling for you to resign, and I don't expect that pressure will ease up anytime soon," unquote. Further in, it includes, quote, "And the depth of ignorance and hatred revealed in those public comments cannot simply be erased with one hastily drafted apology," unquote. Needless to say, no apology was granted by her. Three days later, the commission unanimously censored Commissioner Scholl and demanded his resignation. Taxpayer-paid county and department heads demanded his resignation. On January 15, the next day, a public employees' union sent a letter demanding Commissioner Scholl's resignation. On February 2, two weeks later, a whopping $10,000 was given to Commissioner Fisher by the same public employees' union. And Commissioner Fisher has paid her political strategist $5,000 so far this year. Is this a planned, coordinated, and well-funded gaslighting effort by Commissioner Fisher and any number of taxpayer-paid employees to overturn an elected official because they don't like his politics? Commissioner Fisher, you ended your email of January 12 with the quote, "Keeping dialogue open and honest is the first step in moving forward," unquote. How about you coming clean on this? Perhaps then, we will start to understand the how, why, and who this...
Thank you, Mr. Ware. I appreciate your testimony.
Chair Smith, can I just quickly respond?
No, I just pissed off about that.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah. So I have not responded in this public forum to what I would consider political questions, and I want to respect Chair Smith's interest in keeping this forum related to county business. And so, but, Mr. Ware, I have reached out to you in the past. I'm happy to have a conversation with you anytime we can, I will address any of your concerns, but not political questions in a public government forum.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. I appreciate your very brief statement. We're going to move on to our next person, Yvonne Lazarus. Please come forward, state your name, residence, and you have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you need to really speak up. I don't know why we're kind of muffled today.
It's like it's off.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Last week, I was here, and the question I had is, why is it so difficult to find information on your website, especially for the advisory groups and their meetings? And I was looking for the Equity Diversity and Inclusion Council Meeting of January 19, 2021. Again, I'm going to repeat the date, January 19, 2021. I urge everybody to watch this. This has been awful, what's going on up here. And these little advisory groups, they don't think anybody's going to see them. Well, I know I, for the longest time, haven't looked, until this stuff started with Mark Scholl. What I saw on that meeting was so political and manipulating, I could not believe it. I believe those people should all be removed and a different Equity Diversity Council made up. It is an honor to be in this board. It's an honor for the people to be in this room. People trust you. Anyway, I have always trusted everybody up here. You're voted in... You're voted in, we followed the way things should be done, so be it. There was openness about getting rid of Mark Shoal, politically. There was openness, but a name wasn't mentioned. There was somebody else they'd like to get rid of on that board. And I know what they were talking about. And then one of them, a young man, had the gumption to come out and say, "We couldn't get rid of Trump, but maybe..." I'm so furious right now, I can't even talk. I've said enough. People in Clackamas County, get off of your games on that computer. Spend this time paying attention. There's trouble up here, and you need to pay attention to it. That is strictly my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne Lazarus. Up next, Les Poole. Please come forward, state your name, residence, and you have three minutes.
I don't know if I can follow Bill Ware, but my name is Les Poole. I live in Gladstone. Today, I wanted to talk a little bit about the overkill that I predicted a year ago. And we saw a presentation on COVID earlier, and we're seeing the governor threatening to shut down inside service again. A question I have for the governor and for the Oregon Health Authority is, why were the numbers that were presented on that slide up there that showed food and restaurants, farm workers, all together? I would like to know, what are the numbers for restaurants? And I would like to know that so I could share it with you. But maybe you can get those numbers and share them with us. And before someone says, "I'm a denier," or former Chair Bernard claims that Tootie Smith thinks that the COVID problem is a hoax, or any other nonsense, I'm very, very troubled. And I could probably make more sense and talk further about that, but given what I just heard from Mr. Ware, I'll segue to that subject. I am incredibly disappointed in Commissioner Fisher, and I believe she's been acting as a political operative. I believe there's been some interesting campaign funding and power brokering going on. And I believe there's been a barely concerted attempt to overturn an election with a technique that is being used elsewhere in the country. And I would call for the county to take action immediately. I mean immediately. I don't know what that looks like, but the first thing I would ask for is that the county look into what's been going on here. This is ridiculous, and we have spent hour after hour after hour, thousands of dollars in staff time, addressing allegations against someone who, regardless of which anyone thinks about anything he ever wrote, he's doing a good job, and he's being attacked by the very people that gave a pass and had no problem with the outrageous conduct of their political A little bit of silence is necessary so I can collect my thoughts. Again, I hope and I ask that the county look into what's going on here and not respond with public relations or a massage job. I believe that if anyone needs to resign-
Thank you.
-it's Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Les Poole. That ends the in-person public testimony today. Christina, do you have anybody online?
I do. I have three people that have registered, and I will just start with the first registration. Looks like that will be Chris Waller. Chris, if you can unmute yourself, let us know your area of residence and your name, and you have three minutes.
Chris Waller, Jennings Lodge. Thank you, Christine. Today, I'd like to talk about leadership. True leaders help both themselves and those around them to do the right thing. They put the collective good ahead of personal or political goals. They have integrity and lead by example. They chart a course by inspiring others with shared visions. Let's look at COVID. What should the actions of a true leader be in this pandemic? We know what the right things are, the things any true leader should be doing. First, among them is encouraging people to get vaccinated. Yet what are we hearing from Tootie Smith and Mark Shoal? Get vaccinated if you want to. Over and over again, Tootie posts COVID-related material guaranteed to inflame her base on Facebook, then fans the flames with her comments. Posters spread anti-vaccine and anti-mask hysteria, and she encourages it with her comments and likes. Tootie asks for your stories of struggles with COVID, but only if they fit her anti-government narrative. She wants to hear from you if you think masks are tyranny, but she didn't ask for your story if you're an emergency room doctor at the breaking point, a COVID survivor struggling with long-term symptoms, or a friend or family member of one of the over 200 people who have died of COVID in Clackamas County. It is absurd that I have to stand here and explain that a true leader would not do this. It is pathetic that a county leader would use their position of power to encourage the spread of rationality. What would a true leader do? Here are what some leaders, who all happen to be Republicans, have said. Governor Kim Reynolds, Iowa, vaccination is the best defense against the virus, and as you've heard, the reward far outweighs the risk. Governor Mike DeWine, Ohio, our way of getting back to normal is through the vaccine. It's our only way to get back. Governor Jim Justice, West Virginia, I tell you over and over, please take the vaccine. Governor Pete Rickett, Nebraska, at the end of the day, this is how we all get through the pandemic. Both Tootie and Mark Shoal are adamant that they want to see all restrictions related to COVID abolished. If you really want to see this happen without condemning even more people in Clackamas County to die of COVID, then start promoting vaccination right now, no weaseling. Your failure to do so while encouraging anti-vaccine, anti-mask, anti-science propaganda is reprehensible. In this time of crisis, our county needs true leaders for all, not politicians pandering to their deluded and dangerous bases. Thank you.
I'm going to respond, Christina.
Okay.
The caller has once again lied consistently about my position. As a matter of fact, this commission doesn't even know. Several months ago, I went to Nancy Bush and implored her to get clinics open in Sandy, Mulholland, Canterbury, and then at the Clackamas Town Center. I said it needs to be done immediately. I have tried hard to get vaccination into Clackamas County to our citizens so they do not have to drive to the convention center. I do not appreciate the repeated attacks on my character as a leader. If we want more vaccinations, it's a supply issue. Call your federal government. Anybody who wants to be vaccinated in this county certainly has a right to do that. I have encouraged people to do so, but I will not pounce on people's choice for their medical care. It is an individual right, and I don't see anybody else giving a voice to the people who dearly want to have a choice. Now, my own father has been vaccinated, and I made sure he was vaccinated because he wanted it, and he's older. My mother-in-law, my family members, and on and on and on and on. So these repeated lies of a political hack who seeks to destroy from this point forward will be met with my comments as well. Thank you, Christina. Next caller.
All right. Next up is Michael Weber. Michael, go ahead and state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Christine. Michael Weber, Oak Grove. Commissioners, words matter. You want businesses to open up fully? So do I. You want children to physically return to classrooms? So do I. You want to stop talking about COVID-19 infection rates and hospital capacity and government restrictions? So do I. The quickest and most effective way to get there is to get shots in arms. We should be doing everything we can to encourage people to get vaccinated. The word "but" has magical properties. It negates everything that came before it. You did a great job there, Timmy, but all Timmy will hear is what comes after the "but." Another magic phrase that negates everything that came before it is "if you want," as in, "You should take the vaccines if you want," as Commissioner Shoal stated during communications last week, and Chair Smith has repeated time and time again. While it might be self-gratifying to blow the dog whistle and pander to your base, this phrase has the chilling effect of causing some people who would normally get the vaccine to delay or even avoid getting it at all, extending the duration of the seemingly endless pandemic. People who have no intention of getting the vaccine know they have a choice. They don't need your permission to put their selfish desires above the health of their friends, families, neighbors, and strangers, let alone their own. Nor is it your job to provide them the social cover of, "Well, my commissioner says it's a choice, so there." The use of this phrase by public officials in positions of authority is irresponsible and counterproductive, creating a clear and present danger to the physical health of our residents and the financial health of our businesses. Quite frankly, represents a dereliction of duty. With cases on the rise again and so many vaccinations needed to reach herd immunity, true leadership would be to say, "If you haven't gotten your first shot yet, sign up today. It's free. Here are the locations of the clinics, and this is how you make an appointment. Full stop." You, as commissioners, share a greater responsibility to society than the average citizen. When you were elected, I expected you to act in the long-term interests of the greater good, rather than trying to score cheap, short-term partisan points with a chosen few. Some of you have fallen woefully short of my expectations. Thank you.
Christina, next.
Okay. The last up is going to be Christine Kennedy. Christine, if you can unmute yourself, state your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Christine Kennedy. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, very good. My name is Christine Kennedy. I live in Lake Oswego, and I would just be interested in kind of sharing my own reaction to Tootie's announcement, excuse me, Chairperson Smith's announcement last week that she wanted people to share their COVID stories. And I guess what I would like to say, and it's really self-evident, is we all have our own COVID stories. We're all going through this experience. And so everybody looks at it through their own lens. I was a little disappointed when the question, the story, was posted on Chair Smith's website because I'm blocked from making comments on that. So it was a little, it was a little disappointed. But I just, I just want to say that as commissioners, you all have a vote. You have a single vote. Chair Smith definitely sets the agenda, but you're all responsible to represent all the people in Clackamas County. And we got really some sobering news today that was not a surprise to me. Unfortunately, I stepped away from the meeting to take a call from somebody that I care about, and this exactly is the situation that I'm in. I cannot see my youngest grandchild. You know, we're all trying to be careful, and yet some people are really just casual, and it's almost like they want to just put it in your face. Over the weekend, I was, there was a funeral, and I was part of that, trying to help us be safe, and one of the people wore a mesh mask. I don't know if you've seen them, but they are a mask, but they are, they have big holes in them. And to me, that just, it was like putting, I don't want to say it, but it was very disrespectful. And I wish you all the best of luck. We're in this together. We need to get through it together. I definitely see just a real fatigue with this. So we need you to lead us through this, please. We have national leadership. We have state leadership. We have local leadership. You're part of that. We need you to lead us. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. And that is the end of my list.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Gary, can you introduce the next item?
Yes, Chair Smith. Next is county administrator update. I will do this. First, I signed three contracts on your behalf, Commissioners, under the authority of the COVID-19 Emergency Declaration Number 2020-14. I'm seeking your ratification of that signage. First was for disaster management, a contract I signed on April 19, 2021, an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Lake Oswego for COVID-19 testing and vaccine administration. This amendment revises the compensation language to bring it in line with the other fire agencies providing the same service. The contract value remains at $150,000. Funding is from State CARES Act funds via the local public health authority. No general funds are involved. The contract ends on December 31, 2021. The second and third contract, also for disaster management, that I signed on April 19, 2021. One is for an intergovernmental agreement with the Hoodland Fire District. The other is an intergovernmental agreement with the Sandy Fire District. Both are for COVID-19 testing and vaccine administration. The contract value for each fire district is $150,000. Funding is also from State CARES Act funds via the local public health authority. No general funds are involved. This contract, both of these contracts also end on December 31, 2021. So I'm seeking your ratification of those three contracts I signed on your behalf.
I've moved to ratify.
Commissioner Fisher has moved to ratify this contract. Commissioner Savis has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Christina, please call the poll.
Of course. Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion has passed. Gary, good news.
Thank you. Before the good news, a quick discussion for you, Commissioners. I did email you. There is a quick action that we need your input on regarding the state of Oregon's allocation of the American Recovery Plan Act funds. I sent you a note from our Public and Government Affairs staff. Chris Lyons from Public and Government Affairs, I believe is online, will help talk you through this, but we need your input today so we can talk with our state legislators tomorrow. So, Chris, are you there?
He has not gotten online.
Is Trent online? Or is Sue online? Okay, I'll do it for you. So, the state of Oregon is receiving $780 million directly from this American Recovery Plan Act, the COVID dollars. Of that, $250 million is taken off the top of that and will be spread out by Senate District. This means $8 million per state senate district. If the state senator and the two representatives within that district can agree how to spend the money together, they will allocate those funds directly. If not, then the money is split, with $4 million that the senator gets to decide how to spend, and $2 million per state rep. So if they can come to an agreement, they can all spend the $8 million. Otherwise, it's divided by state rep and not. Oh, Trent, thank you. Can you take it, can you take it from here, please, Trent? Or Chris? So I've just teed it off, so we're seeking your input. What should be the county's ask to our senators for these funds? Trent, go ahead.
If Chris Lyons is online, he's the lead on this, but I'm here to answer any questions. Is Chris-
So, Chris, go ahead.
I'm here.
Finish what I started, please, Chris.
Yes, so as you described, Gary, that is the current process that the legislature has agreed upon, and- And so our recommendation is based on the levels of expense of the different earmarks that the board has already identified and agreed to and put into our legislative priorities that really sunrise, the Sunrise Corridor concept and the Willamette Falls locks requests are most competitive and enjoy the support of many of our own Clackamas legislators and likely would have the best chance of success.
Chris, do we pick one of those two, Sunrise or Willamette Falls locks? Is that what you're asking us today?
No, I propose that we pursue both of them.
Okay.
With some of our legislators and with the Clackamas Caucus, which is likely to be supporting both of those as a caucus.
Well, I read the email that came out, maybe yesterday, I don't remember when this came out, and I thought that those two projects had been teed up. I'm fine with those projects. I know the other commissioners want to comment on this. Christina, there's a light on. Commissioner Savis, has a hand raised?
Mr. Savis, you're up.
Yeah, mine's more of a, I guess, a mathematical question. You know, we have more than one senator and more than two representatives for Clackamas County. So does that mean we get to multiply that out to some degree? Is this going to be funding from more than just one senator and two state representatives by district? Or is it the entire districts?
So it will be $8 million per senate district. So if the two representatives per senate district can agree with that senator on how to spend those dollars as a group, then they could potentially pool their resources to do bigger projects. But if they can't agree, then it would be likely broken out, it would definitely be broken out, $2 million per rep and $4 million for the senator. So I think there are, all of our legislators are exploring ways to work together on some of these bigger projects that might straddle district boundaries or that might have more regional or county-wide significance to them, to see if there's ways to, you know, float more project boats by pooling all these resources.
Okay, Chris. Gary Schmidt wants to comment.
Chris, I think what Commissioner Savis was asking, or at least I will ask, how many senate districts is Clackamas County in? How many bites at this do we get?
Well, I have to look at the list. I think we have around six or seven senators, but they also, their districts cover multiple counties. So that's the other factor here, is that they'll be looking at across all of their districts and multiple jurisdictions at all of the different priority projects.
So would the best way, Board, to look at this is just to remain consistent with our ask. We'll let others do the math on this. We'll stick with the Sunrise Corridor and the Willamette Falls locks in this, and then let somebody else do the math for it. And if we can get any funding on this, I would consider it a wonderful thing.
Commissioner Fisher, has her hand raised?
Who?
Commissioner Fisher.
Commissioner Fisher.
So, Trent, are there, or Chris, or whoever wants to answer this, are there not any other restrictions, given that this was for a COVID plan? Do we have, are there any other requirements about how the money can be used?
It's a good question, and there are still a lot of unknowns about that. For instance, we don't know yet whether transportation is an eligible use of these dollars. So, you know, for these two projects that we're talking about, they are much more than just transportation. So I think that a case could be made that those two could be eligible, but there are still a lot of unknowns.
When is the deadline for this? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's my question. Second time you did that today.
Commissioner Fisher wants to know when the deadline is.
Yeah. Unfortunately, there is no, you know, date for when these are due, but I think the sooner the better because they're talking right now about how they're going to be, you know, figuring out how they're going to be using all of these dollars. So I think it's to our advantage to be talking with our legislators right now about how, about ways that they can put dollars to projects.
Commissioner Fisher, any further questions?
So they, Chris, I just want to make sure this money has to go for projects, like capital expenses, or do we have any other guidance?
No, there really is very little information, but I don't think it has to be just for I know that, you know, there are requests in that are more programmatic. For instance, you know, business support is out there. And I know, you know, the governor is also taking a look at both projects and programs to fund. And again, what we're talking about here is just a portion of the state's share. So there's going to be another roughly $500 million of the state's money that they're going to be looking at how to support programs and other projects.
Okay, Chris, you've identified two projects here. Do we have, is there a need for a backup project, a couple of backups?
Yeah.
In cases this is rejected, I don't know. Do you have something in mind, Trent and Chris?
Well, so we have three other projects that we've, that the board has identified for funding at both the federal and state levels. We have the Bull Run Bridge. We have the 65th and Elexon Stafford Road Intersection Improvement and the Boring Lagoon Water Resource Recovery Facility Replacement Project. All of these have been submitted to our federal delegation, as well as put into the governor's office as potential projects of regional, if not statewide, significance that I think could be backups. I think that the problem with some of those is that, you know, at least a couple of them are transportation-related, and the cost is roughly $10 million for two of them. So that's already higher than what one individual senator would have available to them.
Commissioner Fisher? Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, so since we're sort of trying to make priorities in the dark without the information as to what the guideposts are, I do, I am very concerned about us potentially moving into extreme risk in just a matter of days and what that will mean to our businesses that have just started to recover, and now they're going to have to go back. I really think our greatest need, if this is COVID-related, is to look at COVID-related impacts for our businesses right now. Because Clackamas County, I don't know about the other two counties, I didn't ask this of Nancy and Philip, but we are the most challenged right now. Multnomah isn't moving into extreme risk, and I don't believe Washington County is threatening to move to extreme risk. I'm looking at Chair Smith to see if she's shaking her head, and I think I'm right about that. So if it's COVID-related, I really want to prioritize, because we don't have enough money in the world to fix that problem. But the more we can buffer and keep our economy moving and reduce the harm, I think is really important.
That's going to take a major policy session on our part, unless there's something identified previously that we can tee up in time. Gary, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, you, all of you have identified the need to support our businesses in Clackamas County, and we were unable to do that prior because we did not get a direct allocation. So that is something that I think you all agree you could ask for in this round. Quickly, Nancy Bush has all emailed you in the last 20 minutes. She wanted to clarify what she said earlier today. The earliest Clackamas County could go into extreme risk is May 7, not next Friday. So it does buy an extra two weeks, but it's May 7 as you make your decisions.
No, we could, that could buy us some time. We could see a reverse in the trend. We just don't know what that's going to do. Yeah, there's a light on, Christina?
Commissioner Savis, has a hand raised?
Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah, well, just knowing that these dollars are going to hit the state and the county around the same time, and we're still waiting for guidance, I think we've got opportunity to take care of the COVID-related impacts and effects with those dollars, should we do that. I just want to just bring us back to the question at hand. It seems, it seems as though we're, I won't say off-topic, I don't mean to say that, but the question at hand was about supporting these two projects. So I thought maybe, and in light of the fact we will have dollars, they will arrive at the same time, we will have that leverage. So shall we get back to the question at hand?
And what is the question at hand? How do we want to spend this? Board, we need to set a priority. I, you know, the list is fine, unless we have something that's nicely wrapped up in a bow, ready to go, I don't know how to approach this project. Commissioner Schrader?
So I'm going to save my comments for Commissioner Communication because we did work this week on the comprehensive economic.
Martha, can't hear you.
I said I'm going to save my comments for Commissioner Communication because this week, the Greater Portland Economic Development District, which is staffed by Greater Portland Inc., is doing its work on how to access the dollars from the Department of Commerce Economic Development. So not only do we have these other sources, we will also have a roadmap.
Wow.
And it includes Washington, Clackamas, okay, and Multnomah County, as well as Clark County, and the other, I can't remember the other county, it's in my notes somewhere across the river. So they look at it as a regional roadmap. So I'll talk a little bit about that because that could give us some really significant guidance of, you know, it's, we can take what we need and what we want from that, so.
Yeah, okay. Paul Savis?
Actually, it's Chris Lyons that has a hand raised.
Chris Lyons, sorry, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I was just going to chime in to the questions about COVID. I know that the Clackamas County Business Recovery Centers has a request into the Clackamas Caucus, seeking $25 million for business support. And so that is already under consideration by our legislators.
I think that's a good point, Chris, that you make. Thank you for sharing that with us. With that in mind, I think we should just stick with the list of priorities that staff has brought forward. If one of those falls up, we have a backup priorities in the queue. Is that clear?
Very clear.
That is clear. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gary?
Great. I do have some good news, but I'll save it for next week. So that's my report. Thank you.
Are you sure? Gary, come on.
I'm getting hungry, commissioners, let's go.
We have good news today.
Yeah, we are getting hungry.
Yes, really good news, Gary.
Okay, quick. Clackamas County Health Centers received a $100,000 grant from Kaiser Permanente to increase vaccinations for underserved and BIPOC, which stands for Black Indigenous People of Color Communities. With these funds, our health centers plan to host six mid-sized COVID-19 vaccine events on weekends that prioritize outreach and access to patients, their families, and caregivers. Health center staff are also considering how funds can be used to support vaccine services in other settings, such as offering home-based vaccines. Thank you to Kaiser Permanente for the grant and our health center's crew for making this happen.
Good news. Thank you.
Very good news. Now we just need more vaccinations.
Need the supply chain.
That's the issue, isn't it? We don't have the vaccination here. Okay, time for Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Fisher, you're up.
Oh, thank you, Chair Smith. I thought our meeting today was very productive, and I really appreciate it. Thank you, Chair Smith, for your leadership in keeping us moving forward. I did want to comment a bit about the public comments regarding the vaccination perspective and our duties as leaders. And I do take that to heart very seriously, that we are leaders in our community, and we, as a county collectively, all of us, our entire board, in our official positions, have been promoting getting our community vaccinated. It just takes, you know, looking at any of our communications, that comes from the top of our organization. We are committed to public health, and I just wanted to state that for the record. I do also want to say, we are tired of this pandemic. I think I speak for almost everyone. We don't want to be wearing these masks. We don't want to social distance. We want to get back with our friends. But right now, as we're moving into extreme risk, we have to stay ever so vigilant. I have a person within my personal circle that had the first round of the vaccine but got COVID anyway and is recovering not so well at home. And it's a very dangerous time. We have to stay vigilant. I want to encourage all of us to support each other in staying vigilant, to remind each other to wear our masks when we cannot be six feet apart, to follow. Gary Schmidt put out some guidance when we come back to the office, when the Moore Staff does, that we are wearing our masks when not actively eating and drinking. We need to support each other. It's hard. These masks slip. It's easy for them to slip. We have to support each other in reminding each other when our masks do slip to keep them up around our faces. And we just have to support each other through these last little bits. So that's my COVID communication. I did also want to comment, I really appreciate public comment immensely. Last night, I participated, I know Chair Smith participated, and Commissioner Scholl participated, and Martha Schrader, I think you were double booked because I didn't see your nice little face on the.
I was at the Lakewood Board meeting we were having.
Okay, so you were double booked, but we got to listen to our community's concerns regarding MAPIT, which is the McLaughlin Area Plan It. Come on, Gary, help me. I can't remember what MAPIT stands for.
It's McLaughlin Area Plan Implementation Team.
Implementation Team, thank you. And the Commissioner Savis spearheaded that. I was just kind of a fly on the wall listening. I was very intrigued with all of the business comments. But I have to say to my commission, I was extremely concerned when the residents that live in the community, business community, got five minutes, they were cut to a minute and a half. And I don't think that's right. I don't think that's fair. It really concerned me during the time of the meeting. I didn't step in and stop it. This was not my meeting. But we, as a board, as a commission, we have got to do better when we are doing public outreach. Everybody needs to have a voice when they're sharing their concerns. So I wanted to share that. The next thing, Chair Smith, and I don't know if, I know Chair Smith was there, I don't know about our other commissioners, if they had the opportunity to participate in our Leadership Academy yesterday. It was like, wow. I know there's a celebration, a graduation this afternoon, but I was ever so inspired and ever so impressed with our staff coming up with very important priorities and implementation plans for issues facing our operations within Clackamas County. I was also very thankful and impressed with Martine Koblenz, who started the meeting with conversations about a toolkit that we all have. I believe all of our commission and staff got a copy of the toolkit of how do we enhance and promote self-care when we're dealing with moments of stress? And we all know that the verdict of George Floyd, which happened a couple days ago, creates stress for members of our staff and our community, and that we have to practice self-care. So I was very thankful that Martine did that for us. And in closing, I'm proud of us, commissioners. I am proud of Clackamas County, where we are and where we're going. And I let Gary know that his comment to our employees was, it touched a bit of my heart. And because the public doesn't get to hear what our great administrator, I think your great administrator, Gary Schmidt, say, he gave me permission to read this comment that he sent out yesterday. Dear colleagues, almost one year ago, I emailed you all regarding the murder of George Floyd. On Tuesday this week, Derek Chauvin was found guilty for Mr. Floyd's murder. I know many of you might be feeling a variety of feelings right now: relief, grief, hurt, anger, hope, sadness, frustration, and anticipation. George Floyd's murder prompted us, as a county, as a country, to look at our history of racism and the inequities that still exist today. People have raised these conversations and taken action towards building a more racially just communities. Here, in Clackamas County, it prompted me to hold listening sessions to hear what employees have been and are currently experiencing. This then prompted the new Equity and Inclusion Office to use the feedback to guide their work with a set of four priorities: a need for training, reviewing the systems to share concern in the workplace, to reexamine hiring and recruitment, and to build community and connection. While Tuesday's verdict brought closure to the specific case, we still have more work to do to continue to build towards racial equity. While this trial is over and many people are feeling resolution, we still have more work to do, both as a nation and as a county. It is the responsibility of all of us to continue this important work daily. Thank you to everyone who's been doing this work every day and continues to do so. you to everyone who's been doing this work every day and continues to do so. So, thank you, Gary Schmidt. Wonderful leadership for our employees, and I so appreciate our demonstrated heartfelt commitment to these very important issues.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Fisher. Up next, Commissioner Schrader.
Well, thanks, colleagues. I have a few things to say today. The first thing is that I serve on the Grand Ron Community Development Fund, and we went through our grants process. We have some folks in Clackamas County that were able to get some dollars from that fund. I am not at liberty to say yet, but as soon as I am, I can tout the folks that applied. And, you know, it really helps our nonprofit entities, help us do the work that we're going to do.
Oh, good.
Secondly, I did miss the meeting the other night because I had a board retreat with the Lakewood-
Hey, Martha, in your mic just a little more.
Lakewood Theater for the Arts. Of course, I'm on the board there. I've always been a big supporter of the arts, not only the visual arts, sculpture, paintings, but also theater, music, and things of that sort. And we had to move forward yesterday with a plan of how we're going to be coping with COVID still, and still maintain our integrity as a theater troupe and supporters of the arts. So, even though I wasn't with the rest of you at this one meeting, I like to think I was doing good work. One of the key things that I mentioned a few minutes ago that I'd like to talk a little bit about tonight, or today, excuse me, is the Greater Portland Economic Recovery Plan. It's helping small businesses recover and grow, advancing economic mobility for individuals, and supporting families and children. So, that's kind of 30,000-foot view of what we've been talking about. We have gotten down to specifics. I will supply that information to you. I just want to make my colleagues aware that we are part of the Greater Portland region, and we come up with a community economic, a comprehensive, excuse me, economic development strategy or sets. And we come out, it gets approved by the economic development folks at the Department of Commerce at the federal level.
Thank you, Martha.
Basically, we get approved by the, we should, we're actually going to be sending it out for public comment. Hopefully, it will be approved within the next two months. And that enables this region to actually access dollars from Economic Development Department of Commerce. So, that's been good work that we're doing. And generally, we focus our, the things that we want to work on, on the major sectors that are here, which, you know, include manufacturing, which include healthcare, which include from our agricultural communities, food processing, nurseries, things of that sort. So, I will bring those details forward. And the reason why the U.S. Department of Commerce is so important to us is because they are the entity at the federal level that works with job creation and economic growth, exports, investments, promotions, first responders, fisheries, and aquaculture, supply chain issues, as well as intellectual property. So, that is their role, and we are going to get as much as we can in resources from them as we move forward with our Greater Portland Economic Recovery Plan. And I have really tried very hard to make sure that Clackamas, our county, gets their due. So, more to be said about that. The other thing I'd like to say, that if you look at the North Clackamas Chamber's website, you will see that Blount is hiring, and they're very well-paying jobs, and they need good people. And I'm also aware that Miles Fiberglass is also looking to hire folks for good jobs. So, there are jobs out there. We have a very robust manufacturing sector in this county. And my hope is that people will be aware of that, look at the website, apply if you need a job. These are good companies. These are good jobs with family wages. And they're some of the best companies we have in our county at this point. So, more to come with this, folks. I'll try and give you the details. Too much to say right now. Finally, we had a conversation today about what leadership is, and it's really helping people to be good leaders with one another. And I'm just going to reiterate that, from my perspective, we need to move forward as a team. I respect Commissioner Fisher. I respect Commissioner Shoal. I respect Chair Smith. I respect, you know, Commissioner Savas. All of us bring our things to the table. I view my job as someone who is flawed and perfect, and who has made many mistakes in my life, which is why I really try not to, I can't be critical of other people because, quite frankly, I need to be more critical about my own failings first, okay? That's just the way I do things. So, I just want to let folks know out there that I believe I'm elected to work with all of my colleagues, that you have chosen to be on this board, and that I am not only required, but have a moral duty to work with. I don't judge anybody if I have issues, you know, with folks. And, you know, as I guess one of our folks said today, to help folks and help people try to do the right thing. I don't do that publicly. You know, I communicate with people. I try to, I try to be helpful. I try to be decent towards them. I try, I think forgiveness is something that maybe this culture has had an absolute lack of, for all of us, every single one of us. So, if I've done anything wrong, and I've done things that have made people upset, I'm going to ask for your forgiveness. But I'm, it's very important for me to work with this, with my colleagues as a team. And I did have a colleague the other day say to me, "Well, boy, Martha, you get beat up by the right and the left." And I said, "Well, I guess I must be doing something right then," because both sides sometimes get really annoyed at me because they think I'm either too nice or clueless. But maybe I am. But that's what you get. So, thank you, Commissioners. That is my pledge to you. So, Commissioner Fisher, Commissioner Shoal, you, Tudy, and Paul.
Thank you for your kind words, Commissioner Schrader.
All right. I'm done. Yay.
Yes. Up next, Commissioner Shoal.
Yes. Good morning, Clackamas County residents and businesses. On the Second Amendment, I have received many communications from constituents about the gun-related measures before the Oregon Legislature. This issue is at the state level. Contact your rep. Contact your senator. Let your voices be heard. Do it now. On the restrictions on civil liberties, 38 states are fully open with no restrictions regarding COVID. We are still the most restricted state, and people are fed up. Schools are opening, but not fast enough for most people. Mental health issues are a big problem. Resentment for wearing these masks is also building up. I'm not, note, I did not say that they're not effective in some ways. I said resentment is building up. This morning, we heard from a public health official that at 70% of exposure to COVID would equal herd immunity. 70% in Clackamas County is 285,000 people with a COVID antibody. Yes, our numbers are going to be going up. But like I asked this morning, how many of these cases have symptoms? How many of these people are actually sick? Now, note, I did not say that it's not a problem for some people. We need to continue protecting those who are susceptible to severe injury from this disease. On the questions from the public comments, I have supported voluntary vaccinations, yes. I will never support forced vaccinations. Our people are free. They have free will. They will decide. And no amount of pressure will ever cause me to support forced vaccinations. On Metro Measure 26-210, thank you, Mr. Elvis Clark, for your comments this morning. It's true, the Metro has done an IGA with the City of Portland to have Portland administer this tax to include 37 full-time employees at Portland. I've heard numbers between $5 million and $14 million as the annual cost to administer this tax. I'm sure we're going to be hearing more about it. Mr. Clark, I encourage you to keep us informed on this. On the Recovery Act, $81 million is coming to the county, and people of the county have expressed interest in how that's going to be spent. My recommendation is, contact the county administrator, contact the Board of Commissioners, and let your organization or your individual idea be heard. Transparency is the key in the proper administration of that $81 million. On the Park Avenue Community Development, last evening, we heard concerns from business owners and residents of the Park Avenue Community Development Zone. My concern is that we, as a county, must support business and jobs. Yesterday, we heard from a gentleman named Sammy Mohammed, a car dealer on McLaughlin. He employs 55 people with good-paying jobs. Restrictions on his business by county zoning has him feeling, in his words, scared. We must respect property owners and businesses in Clackamas County. We cannot afford to lose one business that's been profitable in a free market. Also, this morning, I listened to the Portland Metro Congestion Pricing Expert Review Panel. Some takeaways for the people of the county to consider. Lynn Peterson said, and I quote, "We cannot build our way out of congestion." Unquote. The question for the people of the Clackamas County today is this: What would commutes and interstate traffic look like in the metropolitan area if I-205 was never built and opened in 1973, and we were confined to I-5 and 99 as our north-south primary routes? Think about it. Also, if tolling or congestion pricing is implemented, most advocates of those taxes have shown no intent to use the money to build new arterials. I ask the people to think about that also. Next, I wish to change my vote on the sensor back in January from a yes to a no. I have been respectful, every member of this board, Commissioners. I have never been disloyal. I have never been deceptive, and I have never been disrespectful. I, like any other citizen, will demand that my conduct and my character be assessed on the total of who I am, just as I do the same for other people. Finally, this is a thought of the week that I like to share with the people of Clackamas County. Thomas Jefferson wrote in our Declaration of Independence that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. To that secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. Let us all remember our responsibility as Jefferson saw it. We work for the people of this county. Our decisions and every dollar we spend must help secure life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness for each of our 430,000 citizens. Thank you. This is Commissioner Shoal. End of patients.
Thank you, Commissioner Shoal. In the past, we have allowed Commissioners to change their votes on motions or topics or whatever. That was a resolution. Gary, what is our process for that today? Do I need a date on when that was done, Mr. Stephen Magcor?
I don't think so, Chair. I think that Commissioner Shoal's changing of his vote right here is fine. It didn't change the substance or the result of it, but he is on record now saying that he would have voted nay on the resolution.
And that is accepted by this board. Thank you very much.
Put it in the meeting minutes of this meeting, so it's noticed and for the record.
Okay. Thank you very much, Administrator Schmidt. Paul Savas has had to go speak at a Rotary meeting right now, and I understand what that's a lot, what that's like, as I've had to do similarly. So, he won't be available for comments. Yeah, like my other Commissioners, I attended the Park Avenue meeting last night, and I was a bit distressed by how it folded out. I was online for that. I did not make a comment. I did not speak. But I will say this: When you're chairing a meeting, or a committee meeting, or this, it's always much more difficult than it looks. That's why I am such a stickler to the rules. And my fellow Commissioners may not like that. The public may not like that. But we must maintain a regular order of business. We must maintain consistency with our testimony. And that's why I allow three minutes for all people who testify. And I make an exception to the presenters and those people who have subject matter expertise. We've had a couple lawyers come before us on some issues, which I consider to be subject matter experts, and they are allowed more time. What I heard last night, however, was not that. I think more people had been presented with more time than others. And the danger in that is the perception that you're sending to the public, whether it's factual or not, it's a perception that one group was favored over another. And it was certainly not the will of this commission to put that out there. These types of meetings, I think we will discuss them privately, whether they would be allowed to go on. I do not like what I heard and saw last night. And all Commissioners will have an opportunity to weigh in on that at the appropriate time. Yes, I have asked for COVID stories. I have not said that they could not consist of any type of story out there. I just offered up examples. And I feel sorry for people who think that I did that when they know that I have not. And they're trying to make some political statements, which are usually inaccurate. But I have one here, very interesting person. Her name is Kelly Robinson. She represents swim babies, Oregon's first swimming school and specialist in swim survival safety. We are a four-generation family-owned business. We have served the Portland and surrounding areas since 1941. I would like to address you not only as a business owner, but from also a personal level. Our school is located in Milwaukee, and prior to COVID, we served 325 families. We work with families who have backyard pools, live near ponds, or on the river. And our mission is to prevent drowning of our most vulnerable age group, children ages one to four, which is the leading cause of accidental death in this area. More children will drown this year than will die from COVID, according to this writer. Swimming lessons were deemed nonessential for all but 14 weeks of 2020 and eight weeks of 2021. Sadly, this did not follow any type of data or science, as I predicted. We are now facing lesson shortages in the metro area due to the staffing shortages and lack of certifications being offered over the past year to train new staff. Colleagues, you want to spend some COVID money? According to the CDC, there is no evidence that the COVID-19 can spread to humans through the use of recreational waters. And she has a link here. I, and then this is a long email, and I'm going to just, okay. Currently, I have 250 families. I served prior to COVID on waiting lists and just added 200 more families who are in need of lessons. The tiered phases implemented by the state have forced me to completely change my model of business. This has caused me to raise prices as I can no longer serve the same numbers of families. I have also covered costs personally. The most pressing issue right now is lack of staffing. Due to the specialty of my business, it takes me months to train a new teacher to teach our methodology. I invest time and resources into new staff, and my average teacher stays with me eight to 10 years as a part-time employee. My well-trained teachers are not coming back to work right now because they are having to homeschool their children and our- to homeschool their children and are collecting unemployment, which in at least two cases pays more than their part-time positions did. At this time, due to the restrictions placed on business, I cannot fathom investing and training new teachers only to lay them off because the tier changed and we cannot serve as many children for an unknown amount of time. Adding insult to injury, my business employment tax was raised over the layoff of staff I had no control over. Now, that is sad. So commissioners, I will be continuing to read these stories, and I hope we can help people like this, as, as was my intent in announcing. I want to hear more COVID stories. I will continue to post this on social media. We all want to be able to do good and help people like this, who in turn are offering a very vital service to our community. With that in mind, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, commissioners and staff. You did well today.